Good evening, everyone. We call the meeting to order. Joy, would you please call the roll?
Hamilton?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yep.
Thank you. So as you can see, counsel, we just have a quorum tonight, so expect some tight votes, I suspect. But we'll move on to our consent agenda. First, are there any additions or changes to this evening's agenda? If not, in our consent agenda, we have approval of minutes from the March 9 meeting, approval of minutes from March 13 special counsel meeting. You have your January and February finance reports. We have a resolution of employment in the police department of Lindsey Miller at $16.68. Before we take that, Chief, if you would explain what we've talked about in terms of the hourly wage there. Also, resolution of completion of the step schedule in the police department and approval of liquor license for everybody's Whole Foods hideaway and claims in the amount of $584,620.71. So, Chief, if you would just talk briefly about that change in policy.
Our department looked at doing away with the step pro- for pay, a step increase. For new employees, it's over a two-year time. It's been difficult for us to keep track of it. It's been difficult for new employees to make ends meet, only getting 80 percent. We looked at, um, the reason we had it in the first place was reimbursement if an employee leaves. Now that's covered with our contract, so they sign for the amount of pay minus minimum wage. They have to pay back anyway if they leave before the three- or four-year contract is completed. There was really no reason to continue with the program. We're, I think, one of only two departments in the city that still has a step increase for new employees. Listening to everybody, we decided to do away with it. The only difficulty between us and City Hall was that we still had our newest employee that start, we still have another employee that's on, still on the step. She's only worked for us a year. So what we're requesting is that, so a new employee isn't making more than an employee that's been with us for a year, that everybody moves up to full pay in each department. Tonight, it's dispatch. The next time we hire a police officer, if we still have officers on pay probation, we'll ask that they move up also. The only difficulty was because ways and means and full city council had already approved the step, so we're asking for a second resolution tonight to move everybody up in the dispatch, all six of them, to full pay.
Okay. Thanks, Chief. And again, I think counsel understands that that's one of the really challenging areas for the police department in keeping good employees in that area, so the discussion of ways and means was that that was worthwhile supporting. So those are your consent agenda items. Are there any questions? Not entertain a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Moved by Hamilton?
Second.
Second by Flornoy. Please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, counsel, we'll move to our public appearances. Our first is Stephen Wilson, who I know as Rudy. And, Ruth, you come up to the podium. I know you had a concern regarding some development in your neighborhood that went through the Board of Adjustment, and I think there was some confusion about what was actually being approved from your standpoint while you did attend the meeting, so if you go ahead and make your presentation.
Yeah, can you hear me good?
Yes.
Again, I'm Stephen Wilson. Most of my name is Rudy Wilson. I've lived in Fairfield 30 years. I live on East Adams Block. It's a very quiet block, very nice, very easygoing. There's a vacant lot that's been there for two years. Several years ago, a condominium, people came to town, they wanted to build a big condominium. Several people here protested, didn't get passed. It's been peaceful. Now, a family, very nice people, we email back and forth. We're very kind, it's very polite. It's not personal, it's business, it's legal. I'm not arguing about them building two duplexes. It might improve the value of our homes. It's fine. It's legal. That's not the point. We all got a letter in the area from the city, and I misread it. I thought it was about the duplexes, and it's not. It's simply about the fact that they had at least one, maybe two zoning ordinances depleted, deleted, evidently by your group or I don't know who, and I hate to wonder why. I tried to get a zoning law changed some years back, they laughed. I'm nobody.
Well, that was a, just to be clear, that was the Board of Adjustment, and they are the board that basically considers variances on our zoning, so, yeah.
Okay. No big thing, and it could have been valid. I wanted to build a cabin in my backyard for my brother. They said, no, you can't do it. It's okay. I'm not against the duplexes. People get to live, not that many people. What I don't, and this is about, is about the parking. I am going to have about where that wall is, up to 16 cars slamming doors at random. I can't control it. Somebody that knows them and supports him suggests that he's going to tell them to close their doors quietly. That would make me want to slam my doors, and it would also be forgotten in a week. It's absurd. Now, I don't know about you, but I don't want to live across the street from a parking lot. It's an eye store, it's going to be noisy. I personally have a problem with it, but I think we, and when I say we, I mean we. I walked around the neighborhood, and I have a signed petition of 15 residents, close as you can get to that lot, who want none of this. They don't even want the duplexes, let alone the traffic and the parking. That's important, I think. The entire block of 600 East Adams, people that live the closest to that lot are saying absolutely do not want any of this. It's not just me. It's not just, hey, you're going to be bothering me. I'm hoping I will adjust. 16 families, what's that, a minimum 40 people, that are saying, we don't want it. Keep the, they don't even want the duplexes. Well, they certainly don't want the cars coming in and out every, anytime you want, hawking their horn, and let alone the kids. One of the guys says, well, the kids can play in the back. They can ride their bikes in the grass. When you were a kid, did you ride, love to ride your bike in like, uh, tall grass or wet grass or on the street? So there's going to be, all the children will be on the street, which has been decided as described as a very busy, racing, dangerous street, and I hope nobody gets hurt. My suggestion, my question, with 40 other people that are humans, like you, like if you live there, they want, anybody can see, Adams Street, Madison Street, way far away. Nobody lives between their lot, that's the vacant lot, the two duplexes, that's my house right there, 15 cars. What about the visitors? Every day, there's four cars at least parked around that street. Where are they going to park? The street's already packed. They're going to be parked all the way along, it's a two-hour parking zone. What, they want to spend the night? So I say, it's so simple. Put the parking lot back here. No one lives back here. Madison Street is about half a mile away. It would bother no one. They could sit in the car and hog, and no one would care. But here, it's going to annoy 40 people. Now, they have said, oh, but it floods back there, because I talked to them, they did not do the research. They didn't know that it can flood back there. I know the people that used to live there. They had a house, and it would flood. Well, that's a problem they're going to have to deal with. They could fix that with a bulldozer in three hours. You move some land here, over to here, you even it out. So it costs you $500. That's the way it goes, but it'll work. Wouldn't it be better, that's all I'm asking, park back here, not up here, to get everything else. The duplexes, have fun. Enjoy your new home. It'll raise the value of my house.
Okay.
But all, but the petition is important, I think.
Thanks, Rudy. Let me make sure the counsel understands what went before the Board of Adjustment and what was decided, so...
I was a little wordy, I was a little wordy.
No, 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 that's fine. Is everyone, Mike, maybe, were you at the meeting?
I was.
Could you give us a synopsis of what was brought before the Board and what they decided?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Right before the Board was a request for variance to waive the parking, the no parking and the front yard requirement. And so the Board listened to testimony of folks in the room, including Mr. Wilson, who spoke in support of the project and in support of waiving the variance, and they voted unanimously to allow the project to proceed as proposed.
The other, but the option that was presented at that meeting was the parking in the rear, correct? There was...
There were two options presented. Parking in the rear, however, there were space issues. The parking in the rear wouldn't allow for adequate parking spaces. Some of them would have to be compact, and maneuverability in the rear would be limited by, due to the slope of the lot.
Right.
And some drainage issues. So the builders would like to put the parking lot in the front of the structure to reduce their costs and allow for the full width spaces as required by ordinance.
Right. And did the, did the letter, do we feel the letter explained that clearly enough?
No, it's not true. The sidewalk is about six feet from the edge of the duplex. Six feet doesn't allow for 16 cars, or eight. Behind the duplexes is all the way to Madison Street. We're talking a half a mile. That's more than 10 feet.
There's more space, right. Stephen, can I ask, um...
Is this my point?
I want to ask our, Scott, to come up and comment on that, because our zoning...
The comment I want to make to the counsel and Mr. Wilson, we send a letter out when we have a variance like this, to everyone within 200 feet of the property, and we got no, no negative response back to the variance that was asked. So I know he's got his, you know, things and everything, but there was nobody at that meeting that we set up that, you know...
And how many...
Well, why would they sign this?
Well, no, 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 that's, that's fine. We trust that you have good signatures from your neighbors, it's just that...
I mean, I was surprised too, a little bit.
It's just that the legal point is that what we're required to do is to send the, send the notice, and then, I think his testimony is just that we didn't get a response. So counsel, you know, the thing is, the Board of Adjustment is in a unique position because they are the final arbiter of something like this. We are not really an appeal board for the, for the Board of Adjustment. John Marcy, John, is, are we allowed to remand an issue like this back to them for another, or their judgment is final?
You aren't a fact finder at all.
Okay.
So if we knew they were building a place to torture children in it, you would have no say?
Well, that's...
Well, no, that's a bad analogy, but it's not true. You would have something to say about it.
We would have, we would have nothing to say about how the police department handles it.
Somebody here would do something.
Somebody would do something. No, let me just get that clarified, because I just want the counsel to be clear about whether there is anything that we can do or not.
I respect what Mr. Wilson is saying, and he and I have talked about this on the phone also. The Board of Adjustment, as the mayor said, is a final determinant on a variance, on a rezone, on a special use, on any of the considerations that go into making it fit on the space of the property owner as far as proper use. If you disagree with what the Board of Adjustment finally decides, there's a 30-day time period to appeal. You appeal not to this board, not to the council, but you appeal to the district court, and that's the way our code's been for about 70 years, so...
Never saw they for nothing.
Now, it's happened, trust me.
I talked to Benny Wagner, you don't mean that district.
That's, that's a magistrate court. This would be in front of one of the district court judges. It's triable in what they call equity to a judge of the district court. So if you appeal it, there is a mechanism to go the next step as far as your due process rights, but it isn't something that you bring back to the council.
Okay. I don't want to take it any more time, but can you tell me who do I contact about that? Who, how to get there, and is it too late?
Probably need some private legal advice.
I'll call you or Mike Brown or something.
I, you can't call me, you can call anybody else. I represent the city.
Any other attorneys in the room that want some business?
I'll call somebody.
All right. Thanks for your presentation, and sorry if there's more we can do.
You're all very kind.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much, and everybody.
Okay, next counsel, Kevin Carn is here, and we're going to talk about the prom parade. Who are you, Kevin?
Good evening, everybody. We've been doing this prom parade since about 1978, and a few years ago, moved up to the Civic Center. We've always, not always come before, but school or somebody's come before, and we want to shut off in front of the Civic Center on Main, Hempstead, Court, those three areas. And I cut, shut off the, in front of the Civic Center about, between 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 a.m., just that, right in front there, that one block, to get ready for it, so Rick Robinson can bring in the bleachers and set them up about 3:00. Then at 3:00, I go around and block off everything else, Hempstead and the other of Court. Then we use that available to park cars. You know, and that gives us approximately about 70 spots. Typically, that's plenty anymore, they're not as big of a parade and everything. But the one thing I have, did put in new this year is, we run into this every time, there's already parked cars there, when Rick comes in to set up about 3:00 p.m. So I thought, this would be a chance to maybe ask for some no parking around those three areas after like midnight, or what Chief Thomas might suggest is for us, so we don't have to call the police department, run numbers, and try to remove all those vehicles while we get ready for the parade. So obviously, the parade starts at 8:00 p.m., runs about approximately 10:00, then Rick comes in, starts tearing down. We always try to get the barricades down, usually by midnight. I put on there by 2:00 a.m., make sure we get, you know, things somewhat squared around before then. So really, what I'm asking is permission to block off 8:00 a.m., approximately that one block of Main, and then at 3:00 p.m., may, finish blocking off Hempstead and the block, Court, around the courthouse. Brigs, we leave that open, except for when the parade comes up. Main Street there at 8:00, then we block off, so we don't have cross traffic for the parade, and that, which has been no problem in the past, but what I'm requesting extra this year is if we put up some no parking signs, say like at midnight, or what Chief Thomas might suggest, so we don't run into these problems of having to try to locate people, or be able to set up the bleachers or not. So the actual time of setting up emergency, I don't know, because a lot of those cars are residents that live in the, along the square, so it's hard to locate them. So I don't know. I'm not sure if there's something going on that Friday night at the Civic Center, or not for sure, but the school called and said the parade is on, because they're real busy at the Civic Center, but, but that's Saturday, you know. So I figured it'd be easier to block, put no parking, you know, sometime in the night shift, and maybe that might eliminate...
Or even just some notices. I know there's a lot of courthouse parking in that area, maybe some notices in the courthouse that day, so that people understand.
We've really struggled with that, especially in that area with RagBri, with all the announcements we do with RagBri. There were still residents that were unaware the RagBri was coming through.
Right.
That we had to tow some, so it's very difficult, but no parking signs, as long as city council approves, is no problem. We can hopefully keep some out, we could put it up the night before.
Well, spatially along that main, right in front of both sides of the, you know, Main Street in front of the Civic Center is the big problem. You know, and hopefully, even if they park a few on Hempstead, we'll probably still be okay, because we can get quite a few in the courthouse lot, because last year, we only parked 52 cars, which, you know, so it never, it varies from year to year.
Sure, sure.
Mike was just suggesting also that we can work with the street department to possibly get something out there earlier as well.
Right.
With the parking.
Well, to answer your question, on Friday, the night before this event, the Chamber of Commerce Annual Awards Banquet is happening, but then I think everyone will be cleared out of there before 10:00 that night.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, they wouldn't want to put them up. I figured, you know, people coming downtown, you wouldn't want to put it up hardly before midnight.
But you're right, it's the cars that park there, every night, by the residents, you have to worry about those.
Right, and they suggested, Kevin, why don't you just put no parking signs for us, and we'll be more than happy to go park somewhere else, you know. I said, well, that gave me the suggestion, why, I should come before and ask for something different on top of what we generally ask for.
Okay. So right now, counsel, we'll take an approval for the request to block off Hempstead and Main, as is described in the application, and beginning at 7:00 a.m. on the 11th.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Flornoy.
I do have a comment, though.
Go ahead.
I faced this problem a lot of years before I started borrowing cones from the Sheriff's Department.
Right.
For Kids' Day.
Right.
And a suggestion would be is, is that you don't need all that many temporary no parking by police order signs. If you have several of those cones to block off each parking space, and maybe three or four of those temporary no parking signs, I'm sure that's going to alleviate a lot of your problems. So maybe if you speak with Deputy Richmond.
Right.
Or Sheriff Morton.
Right.
About maybe borrowing those to do that with, and I always put them out at about midnight, before Kids' Day.
Oh, okay.
So that all the parking spaces are all closed off at that point, and it's been, I think I've only had one time where somebody pulled in and parked, moved a cone to pull it apart.
And that's right...
And we had to have it moved.
That's right on the square.
But that's right on the square.
Yeah, is this a little different, because I think residents who live on the square park a block off, because it's, they're allowed to for 24 hours, yeah.
Right.
So it's a matter of the time that you get them in there. It might need to be earlier than midnight, yeah.
Yeah, if, if there's an event going on at the Civic Center and events all done by 10:00, if you do it immediately after that's all done, then you've got an opportunity to get those spaces closed a bit.
Should work.
I support what you're doing with closing the streets and all of that, that's...
It's just always been tough when I got a call, the dispatcher, she runs the plates and the police run around for two hours.
It's really difficult.
Last year, they did it, but it took, it took us two hours, and then Rick was way behind, and people says, well, I want to sit there, and I said, bleachers, I even say that. You know, but if, you know, if I'm allowed to put cones out as well at 10:00, right after the event, I'd be more than willing to do that, just to...
I think that's a great idea, let Chief Deputy Richmond know you'll be calling them.
Yeah, I'm sure I'll be talking to Deputy Richmond. He's being installed here pretty soon at the launch.
It's good to know.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you, Kevin. Hopefully, the weather's great, too.
I hope so.
Thanks.
All right.
Next, counsel, we'll move to our action items. First is going to be the awarding of contract for Water Main Project. Melanie, you can review the bids received, or bid.
Yes. During the Water Main replacement project along Fourth Street, we noticed or found that one of the lines serving MUM, particularly the one that's serving the fire line to the Age of Enlightenment, was crossing Highway 1 at an angle, and that the connection point was just outside of an intake along Highway 1. So in order to connect that main, that line to the new main, we would have had to have been out in Highway 1. There was issues with it being right in front of the intake. So at that time, the water department and I discussed, well, let's go ahead and take this opportunity to replace that line under Highway 1, put it more perpendicular, and also just get an old line out from underneath Highway 1. The contractor, Pilcher Construction, that's doing Fourth Street, does not have the capabilities to do a cased bore. So we decided to go out for quotes, instead of doing it as a change order to the original project, do it as a separate project. We sent out quote documents to four contractors that have done boring in this area, and we only received one quote back, but that was from Drish Construction of Fairfield, for I spoke with Steve, and he felt this number was good, even though we only received one quote, and would recommend accepting this.
Okay, thank you, Melanie. And counsel, as you can see, that is just a little below the engineer's estimate, so Drish has obviously done a lot of that work for us, good company, so recommendation, accept a recommendation to approve the bid.
Move to accept recommendation.
Moved by Hammers.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Next, counsel, we have approval of a filming permit application form. I know Public Safety has worked on this with some of the local filmmakers. Tony, if you could give us some background on the application?
Well, for years, we had issues in Fairfield with people wanting to make films and shooting films, and locations they weren't approved for, and films they shouldn't be shooting on city property, quite frankly. So for the last several months, we've been reviewing and trying to come up with a policy for anyone wanting to make films in Fairfield to fill out and be approved by the city before they can, can do so. We've had input from MUM Film Group out there, several council members on the committee, the police department, and several others have had input into this form we have come up with today, that's in front of you in your packets. There is a fee of $50 to fill out for the film permit. It's, you come to City Hall to get it. All permits require, I won't say all, general permits require 10 business days before filming that this be filled out and approved. If there's any road closures, we're requesting four weeks, so the city council can approve any road closures or alley closures before they do that. In a rare emergency, if they come in here and for some reason don't have the time to get it done, and there's no road closures required, Michael and the department heads can approve an emergency-type permit occasionally for someone, but not on a repeated, repeated time after time after time. So here's a policy. There is an insurance liability required in the policy. There's, you can read through it, there's all the information for the onsite, shoot information, what information they're required to have, as far from the city, what they're requesting, any special assistance, authorization from surrounding property owners, and you can read the form, I'm not going to go through it line by line, but, and then on the back page, it has a compliance agreement and a whole harmless agreement for the city of Fairfield.
Very good. Seems, seems very comprehensive, a good thing to have in place for the amount of activity that we do have here, so...
So I make a motion to approve this film application for the city of Fairfield.
Second.
Moved by Hammers, second by Hallie. Any other discussion? Not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Next, we have an agreement for our annual bridge inspection. Mike, if you would give us background on that.
Thank you, Mayor. In your package, you'll find a proposal from Calhoun Burns Associates for our annual bridge inspection, this for our inspection of our five bridges in accordance with state and federal law. The lump sum of the contract is $1,500, and there's hourly rates, you can see on attachment B, for any work that's above and beyond the scope of the visual inspections, which may include load ratings or other, other necessary items attached with the inspection process.
And what is their, what's their timeline for completing this?
Their timeline is, once we get the agreement to them, we should have a report back by, I would anticipate, early fall.
Okay, great. Counsel, we need a motion then to approve the agreement with Calhoun Burns.
Move to approve.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Just to verify, two of these are pedestrian bridges, correct?
Right.
Interesting.
Still requiring inspection.
Yeah.
Okay. Next, I'm going to ask our city attorney, John Marcy. Is John out there? Tell him he's up. John, we're going to talk about the leaseback agreement.
Sure.
Thanks.
As you recall, at your last council session, you authorized us going ahead with the acquisition of the full taking of the Lila Williams site for our retention basin, construction as the first phase in the sewer... the first phase in the sewer expansion project. Part of that agreement was an agreement that she would be allowed to lease back from the time we acquire possession and ownership of the property for a period limited to a time in 2015 that would be consistent with what our engineers, surveyors, assessors, and evaluators for purposes like historical, archaeological, and so forth will need to be on the site and do things. The leaseback that you have in your tablets essentially restates the provisions from the agreement for legal settlement that you approved at the last council session with her, but it recites specifically the times that we're intending based on what we think will happen with an acquisition closing that should happen by the end of this month. So we started this with April 1st. She has it leased back under this arrangement until October 1st with the opportunity for one extension if she requested in writing before October 1st. The monthly rent is stated. The conditions of her use of it are tied to our needs to the extent that she not interrupt us in our process of preparation for construction. We've assured her she'll have what we call peaceful enjoyment of the premises up through the time she vacates. She can vacate earlier if she chooses, at which point we will refund her part of the rent. We're going to require her at the closing to prepay the rent so that we basically have that part handled instead of a monthly event. And beyond that, there's really nothing that we haven't already walked through with you in this as far as what your legal settlement agreement provided during the time she's in there, if she wants to do some things as far as we talked about the last time, as far as possibly salvaging the garage, taking some things out of the house that were reserved in that provision and so forth. She's the tenant, we're not going to be in the house except for limited purposes that our engineers need and our assessors of value and persons that are doing the separate evaluations that we need for different state purposes need somewhere on that 10 acres. So I'm asking you to authorize this tonight. Her attorney has indicated she would begin to sign this in a next day or two, and that will precipitate us going ahead and setting up a closing on everything.
Okay, thank you, John. So on that recommendation, I entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
By Hamilton, second by Flornoy. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. John, while you're there, I think we'll move the resolution on Logan Apartments amendment up, so.
Let me grab.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it'd be easier for you to.
Okay. You all have, I believe, a copy of a corrective resolution. This resolution essentially says that you already did this as far as approving the sale by prior proceedings. However, in the course of the prior proceedings, one word turned up to be different when we got our platte survey on this, and that one word was southwestern addition instead of Ratcliffe addition. And to explain how that happened, we, basically, we removed the Ratcliffe addition parcels that were part of the sale literally the day that our buyer came in to sign the offer to buy a purchase agreement. In the course of that, we inadvertently removed the southwestern addition from the description instead of the Ratcliffe addition from the description. So you're only changing one word by your corrective resolution to authorize this again. And my belief is that we're doing this for housekeeping at the request of the attorney for the buyer, but you've always been selling 48 units, you've always been selling 404, South Fourth Street, and that has never changed in any of the documents since last May. So except for the one word change in the description, which on the second page refers to southwestern addition now instead of Ratcliffe addition, that would be the whole reason for this corrective resolution.
Okay, thank you, John. Make a motion, entertain a motion then to approve the amendment.
Move to approve.
Move by Hammers, second by Flornoy. Discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Next council, we have a request for a tax abatement, and we have two this evening. One will be at 11618 West Burlington, the green billing supply. And let me just get that open. Sorry. So this was specifically for new storefront windows, demolition, repair, and a solar array on the roof deck. Aaron?
Yes. That is accurate.
Yeah, that's fine. If anybody has any questions on the renovations of the building, you can direct them to the property owner. If not, I think this, generally, this falls under our guidelines for the abatements and we'll just go ahead and make a motion to approve that.
Quick question, the 116, 118, is that?
That's the legal address.
At some point, it was two and get caught combined.
Yeah, it spans from 116 to 118.
Makes sense. I'll move to approve.
Second.
Move by Hallie and second by Flornoy to approve the abatement. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
And then the next one we have this evening is for 608 South Main, John Corley Day. And there, it sounds like there was quite a bit of remodeling and renovation that took place, insulation, new furnace, interior sheet rock and painting, exterior roofing and gutter. Hello, John? Property owner here as well? Any questions regarding the work that was done on that property? Not entertain a motion to approve the abatement? We make it easy on you, John.
Move to approve.
I'm sorry, who was the motion? Move by Hammers, second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thanks very much. Okay, next council, we have a public hearing, and this would be the approval and adoption of the final schedule for nuisance assessments. And so open the public hearing at this time and ask if there is anyone who would like to speak and challenge any of these nuisance. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask for approval of the schedule.
Move to approve.
Move by Hammers.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Next council, similarly, we have adoption of a final schedule for a stop box curb stop repair abatement. This also is public hearing, we'll open the public hearing, see if there's any comment on that. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Mike, could you give us the background on this, please?
Absolutely. This is for the Red Rock Bar and Grill, and there was some curb stop work completed at that location, and he requested that we assess it to his property instead of writing a check to the city. So that is why we're here before you to request permission to assess the work that was completed at that address.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Is the property that was under the former owner's name still belong to him?
It is, our understanding that property is in the middle of a real estate transaction. However, I don't feel it'll affect our assessment process. It should be his responsibility to disclose that to a prospective buyer.
Okay. Move to approve.
Move by Hallie, second by Hammers. Discussion? All those, yes?
Just a second.
Yep.
Stop boxes are the on-off valve that are out in front of buildings. They are the property owner's responsibility if the stop box breaks or fails for any reason, it's theirs to repair and replace. So that's why this comes before us, this type of issue. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands what a stop box is, you know, that are watching or listening through the radio or in the newspaper, that that is what these are targeted to, so.
Great, thank you, Darren. Next council will move to consider the second reading of our ordinance on, what's that? We didn't vote, called for the vote, that was discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Now we'll move on to our second reading of the utility rate increase. This also is a public hearing, open the public hearing at this time, ask for any comments. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask for action from the council.
Move to approve.
Move by Hamilton to approve to the, from the second to the third reading.
Second.
Second by Hammers. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Next council, we have our first reading of ordinance regarding no parking in right-of-way on South Highway One. Melanie, Mike, you might comment on that, you have a little more history with how this is coming before us.
So I guess paper trail on this indicates that the council has acted on this in the past, but it was acted on as an action item rather than an ordinance. And so the DOT has requested the city act on this as an ordinance to get that cleaned up. The particular issue here is the semi parking in front of the new South Casey's. That shoulder is, you know, now that it's cleaned up from what it was, the semis do like to park there, causing a lot of visibility issues. So I agree with the DOT's assessment that this is a problem at that corner, and so I completely agree. When you acted on this in the past, you also wanted to do no parking in front of the hospital with it being that close to the interchange. So this cleans it up by doing no parking on the west side of Highway One from 227th to just north of Casey's. The next property north of Casey's is still in the county, so that's why this ordinance only goes to that property line. On the east side, it goes from 227th to Libertyville Road. We just don't see an issue on the east side of the semis parking there, which is why we wrote this stopping at Libertyville Road.
Okay, thanks, Melanie, appreciate that.
And Public Safety Committee approved this, and so did the DOT.
Okay. Very good, so this is our first reading. We'll then entertain a motion to approve from the first and the second reading.
So moved.
Move by Hammers.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Next council will move to our committee reports. Darren, are you prepared to give away some of these committee reports?
Yes, I am.
Actually, we only have one member here.
Yes, I am. John asked me to give this report. We met on March 16th at 7:00 here at City Hall. The committee is Jessica Ledger-Kalen, myself, and John Revelinsky is the chairperson. Mayor Malloy sat in on the meeting, and so did City Administrator Mike Harmon. First came before us was fee rate increases for rental housing inspections and the various fees that go along with that. Planning and zoning board of adjustment meeting fees, home occupation annual fee, mobile home spaces fees, lodging houses fees, and each individual unit after that in a lodging house. We approve those changes and recommend that the council accepts them as well. Scott Vaughn, our code enforcement officer, brought these to us. We haven't had any changes in these fees for many years, and we felt that it was time to update it a little bit over what we currently had. So that is one action item I think that we should have.
For the public record, would you mind reading them, the proposed increases?
Sure. Let's start at the top of the list here. For rental housing inspection, the first unit will go from $40 to $80. Rental housing inspection fees are only collected once every four years, so we need to keep that in mind as well. Each additional unit after the first unit was $10 and will now be $50. Reinspection fees for the first unit would be $15, or excuse me, that fee is going to stay the same as what it was, $15 previously to $15 now. The reinspections are needed when the occupant or the owner has not recognized that we were coming to inspect the unit, and we would have to come back at a later time to redo that. We have hours involved in that. No-show fees where the inspection has been previously set up, but then no one shows up to actually allow us to come in to do that. It's going to go from $25 to $50. We also have our planning and zoning board of adjustment meeting fees, they were $50 in order to have that board convene and make a determination to recommend to the council. It's going to go to $150 for that. Home occupation annual fee, this is one of the very few annual fees that we have here. It's currently $10 to operate a business from your home that has little to no foot traffic or access as a storefront. And again, it'll go from $10 to $50 for that home occupation permit. Mobile home spaces, we currently had a fee of $1 per space in a mobile home park, and we're going to move that to $12 per space. Lodging houses, which would be bed and breakfasts or that sort of fare. We have a $20 fee currently for the first unit, that would move to $80. Each additional unit after that currently was 10, 15, or 5, and it's going to move to a straight $30 fee for each additional unit. And so that's the list and the fees that we discussed.
Okay. Thanks, Darren. So you'll make a motion then to approve those recommended fee structures?
Yes, I make that motion.
Move by Hamilton?
Second.
Second by Hammers. Any other discussion?
Mayor, for administrative clarification, what would be the effective date of the motion?
I don't think that was discussed.
No, I don't think so either.
Thoughts on that?
Thinking about fiscal year July 1st.
Okay. It's kind of a thought I had, too, so.
That would work.
It's supposed to be for July 1st. Great. Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We continued on in that meeting, we talked about an upcoming lost referendum vote that would happen this November, which would look at reallocating the way that the lost or local option sales tax is used from its current form of 50% for streets. Would it be 25% for sewers, 12 and 1/2% for Civic Center debt, and the remaining 12 and 1/2% for community betterment. What is being considered is changing that to 50% for streets again, and then the remainder 50% to community betterment. There was also some. There was also some discussion involved with the civic center being in that with a percentage going to pay off the debt for the civic center right now, and how much we actually pay in payments versus how much is actually brought in on that twelve percent, and finding out what difference there is, or if there is any difference in that. We aren't asking for any action on this particular item. And that also follows through with the ongoing civic center maintenance discussion that we had, so. The city financial policy, city of Fairfield currently doesn't have a written policy in place for how, how the city manages its debts and its finances. Mr. Harmon is currently working on that document. We had some documents supplied from us from other communities that have these policies in place, and Jessica was working on that initially. Once Mike came on board, he took the lead on it, and you're about eighty percent complete with that, from what I remember you saying. So, once we have that policy completed and reviewed by the Ways and Means Committee, we'll bring it to the council for full consideration.
Okay, great.
And I believe that's it. Thank you.
Thanks for your report. Next report from Public Safety Committee.
Corey, I already discussed two of our main things, we discussed four items at night. Two requiring council approval was the ordinance and the parking, or the parking in the film permit. We also discussed, had one fair fest committee meeting, our first one of many, I'm sure. They're going to meet with department heads and then come back for a second meeting. We also discussed the Fourth Street where we're crossing one more time at our meeting, and Michael wanted to highlight that tonight at this meeting, so here you are, sir.
All I can say is we're working on it. It'll be done in the next decade, I promise.
You're optimistic.
And that was it. All right, thanks for your report. And Michael, you have a report on the community visioning process?
Uh, sure. Our sustainability coordinator, Scott Tim, applied for grant for the city to participate once again in the Iowa community visioning process. This is kind of a joint effort between the DOT and Trees Forever. Come into a community and help identify enhancements that can be made to transportation, specifically any landscaping that can be done to enhance transportation. So we've had some initial meetings. The next step is on Saturday, April 18th. That morning, we'll conduct what's called a transportation assets and barriers assessment. So we'll have groups of, there'll be families with children, there'll be people who have mobility issues, there'll be elderly, there'll be active users, we'll break them up and they'll basically, we'll convene at the civic center, and then go out into the community with cameras and go to places that are both some of our favorite places in the town in terms of places we like to visit or areas we like to travel on, and then also areas that we feel are problems or could be improved upon. My mind goes to the route that we're trying to get from the south side of town to the new pool and rec center. Then we'll come back and as part of this grant, we don't get any funding necessarily, but they have people on hand who will take all this information, compile it, and put it into an actual suggestion for the city. And then they have engineers and landscape architects who come up with some, some ideas for projects, and then they, they try to help us find funding, but they don't necessarily give us the funding. So in the past, this was done, 2001 or 2003, I believe.
Yeah.
And some of that work is now completed in terms of some of the trail work along South Highway One and other things.
Signage for the bike way, walkway, and the cultural walk signs, I believe, were included in that type of work as well.
What else was in there? Yeah, there was, yeah. Several community visioning projects have been, have been successfully done, yes.
Yep, so more on that as it unfolds, but we'll put out the word for people to want to participate on April 18th.
Thank you, Michael, appreciate that. Next, our city administrator report on pool update, Michael?
Uh, just briefly, Mayor, on the rec center, we can officially say that work has begun. There was a contractor on site this week, starting to do a little bit of work for the entryway on the pool, and the materials have ordered, so we'll start to see materials be delivered on site, we hope, by the end of this week, and things will really start to get busy up there. In terms of a pool update, I was at a conference, I believe Derek is going to give the council report on the pool.
Okay, great, thank you.
We met with Cunningham, Burbach, and Rishio. They gave an update on where they're at with the building construction. They don't have very many days to miss before they're going to be delayed, so we're praying for good weather. I think attached to your document is the missed days and estimated completion dates of the building pool, and when they get off the site.
Any questions for Derek?
What's the scheduled opening day, though? June 19th, they'll still be cleaning up.
We're, we're planning on the day after school's out.
Okay. Thank you, Derek, appreciate it. Next, we have a project update report, Melanie.
Okay, so as we all noticed that the snow has gone away since the last time I was giving an update, so I've touched base with lots of, hopefully, oh my gosh, I can't believe I said, don't write that down, because then we'll end up with snow, I'm sorry for jinxing, that's all. Um, I've touched base with some of the contractors from work that's left over from last year, so on the second page, you'll see some of those listed. And the work on the basketball court at Opie Nelson should be starting here soon, as well as the Highland Street reconstruction. This is Highland from Madison to Jackson. There is a dead-end street there, so they will be paving it a block at a time so that the people on the dead-end streets still have access. But that, we've got a pre-construction meeting on Wednesday, so I'll have a better idea of their actual start date later this week, but that should be within this next month that we see Highland Street closed. The water main, a project awarded to Pilcher Construction, they obviously have cleanup on Washington and Fourth. They had not started the Madison section, so it's the east end of Madison, it ends at Park. That general area, they'll be starting that in this next month as well, in addition to the cleanup along Washington and Fourth, including sidewalks and driveways along those, those sections. The rest of them are just general project updates, nothing too specific. Third from the bottom, the 2015 sanitary sewer CDVG application. I'll be working with Sean to move this into kind of the project stage rather than the planning stage. The initial income surveys that came back said that these areas met the low to moderate income requirements for a CDVG application, so the city will be applying for a CDVG application in November for sewer work in those drainage areas. But we'll work on further defining that project here in the next couple months.
Great. Any questions?
I have one question.
Yes.
On the Highland project, are they going to go back in there where all the old trees were tore out and the big divots were left in the yards and fix those when they fix the street, or is that the homeowner's job to do that, or what's the story on that?
Um, I, I'll, I'll have to look at them. Most of them, I believe, were close enough to the street that they were going to be part of the street project. If they're farther back in the yard, we'll have to look, look at them, they would be part, they would be the city's responsibility, but whether the street, it happens with the street or something else, that's what I will, I'll look into. There's a few residents still on Highland that have not received their new trees for their replacements, so once the street's done, we'll be contacting them about getting their replacement trees.
I know 605 is really bad.
The whole, the divots?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
One question, what's left to do on 12th and Burlington?
Um, the joints need to be sealed on the, on the concrete still.
Okay.
Got too cold last year, didn't finish that up.
Question on the, on that project, Citizen had brought this to my attention also. The colored concrete was intended to make that walkway more visible.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure whether we got a bright enough color, or whether it really is sort of visible enough. I'm just wondering if we might just border those with a stripe, not the, the outside borders? Daryl, just to, to highlight those a little bit, a little bit more, do we think that they're, they are enough, or is it the street salt that's made them kind of not very bright? Because when it was poured, it looked great.
Um, I don't know when the sweeping occurs, I would guess it's the yearly, however often you do the sweeping.
Yeah, let's, let's see how it looks after that.
It would help, but Daryl and I can, will discuss that and look into that.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
Thanks for your report.
Little side note, the skate park is getting a lot of use, I noticed. That's what's a very popular addition.
And I did talk to the Blue Ribbon Landscaping, will be seeding that, but we'll wait till a little more consistent warm weather, weather before we get that down, but they do have that on their list for the spring as well. What?
It's drying out.
Yes, yep.
I'll, I'll mention, council, that each year, we have all of the third grade classes from the area come into City Hall for a brief civics lesson, and what I generally do is give each of the participants a chance to sit up on the council dais and take on the role of mayor and council, and learn how to approach an issue and how to make a motion, how to pass a motion. And many times what I'll do is I'll have the teachers bring up an issue, and then from time to time, we'll have some of the third graders from the audience bring up the issue. So one of the issues that came up last week when we had our first group in was the fact that bicycles were not allowed to be used on the skate park, and we need a BMX parked next to it, so. And that motion did pass unanimously among the third graders, just to, just to forewarn you. All right, next, we'll take a report from Chief Thomas on our police statistics for 2014.
I definitely will quickly go through the statistics. I believe everybody received them, so if you have some specific questions, we're looking at, we're kind of now in the phase of analyzing the statistics that we did have. I apologize for the delay in getting it to you, it was my oversight. I forgot to get it to you in January, February, when these reports were first done. Mr. Flornoy reminded me that you folks hadn't received them yet. The biggest question we're looking at now is, we had a little increase in criminal acts reported to us that were investigated by FPD. We had a huge increase in calls for service. What that's, that is, is that's every call that's documented throughout the year, from a citizen calling in with a question that goes to an officer, to a traffic stop, to pretty much any call we go on. So that's every call an officer responds to. We saw a huge increase this last year. We know citizens are calling us more for assistance, not necessarily a bad thing. There's a lot of calls for service that we were happy to respond to, so it isn't a huge, it was, it explained why it seemed we were way behind last year. I think it was difficult for the officers to keep up on their investigations because of the amount of calls. As you can see, we had a fifteen, over a fifteen percent increase from 2013, from 9,497 calls for service up to 11,253. Our computer system only goes back to 2010, that's the highest year we've had since 2010. Once again, it's not necessarily bad news, it's just our officers are quite busy. I tried to break down the crimes that people want the statistics on, I have two pages of criminal acts in our computer system, I didn't want to bore you with a lot of statistics. We did see a trend still increasing in burglaries, a big increase in thefts we're investigating. I was happy to say there were other crimes that were down a little bit, or stayed consistent at least, such as drug offenses, stayed very consistent. Sexual offenses are down a little bit, which is great news. All in all, it kind of gave us an idea that we talked about with my staff of administrators. Such one topic that was addressed by, was the theft of motor vehicles, because it's up a little bit, it's not a huge increase, but 2013, we had nine motor vehicles, last year we had fourteen, and we've seen an increase in trend in stolen vehicles. So the staff took a little bit of time to investigate. It's more, it was helpful to us because we can release information to the media, by and large, the most vehicles stolen, had the keys left in the vehicle and unlocked. So it was a public education type thing to do a little preventative, prevent the crimes before they happened. Unfortunately, it's a small percentage of subjects that commit these crimes, but they're opportunistic, and if we can take that opportunity away from them, hopefully, we can get those numbers down. So it's one of the areas we've chosen to address among the increase in, like I said, we looked at from last year, we had about a three percent increase in criminal acts reported to us. We went from 941 to 970, but that is consistent. Are there any questions? I guess down at the bottom, there was good news, traffic accidents were down quite a bit.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
Does you, do you keep stats like the number of minutes an officer spends on a, on a call to service or a call for service?
Our computer system doesn't have that capability, we'd actually have to go to the radio log.
Okay, I thought maybe you recorded automatically, because then we could put a number on how many hours of extra time your officers are spending on service calls, for instance. When it goes up eighteen percent, that's quite a bit of increase in terms of numbers, but it could be a much larger increase in terms of time.
Definitely, and that, that's a good point. And we also looked at, and I don't, I apologize, I'm getting older, I'm not as young as I used to be, but we looked at an average of the officers that answer calls. In other words, we take the three of us out, so eleven officers that aren't administrators answering the calls, and looked at different, what months, and try to set up officers, or what shift especially, and how many adequately, for next year, I'd like to have a more detailed report for especially public safety, and the rest, what our officers are doing, when are our busy months, are they able to keep up with calls, and do we need to restructure if, if, because it is quite an increase. We're looking at, I think each officer handling about eighty-plus calls a month. And when you have, the concerns we have now, that I explain to many citizens, the officers don't just have their case, they're working. Usually, on average, most officers have about five to 10 cases that they're actively are investigating, and that's between radio calls and everything else that's going on. So a lot of times, an officer will spend an hour on a case, and then switch to another case, and then it's several hours before they get back to that case, and it is frustrating to citizens. We don't do as good a job as letting them know what we're doing. We're trying to get better at that, so they understand why we're working other cases and trying to get back to them, but it's, it's something we're definitely trying to improve to help out the victim.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions?
Um, when you say calls in, the 11,000 calls, that's, that's not just 911 calls, that's all calls that come to the law center correctly?
I should, it's, we take, Mr. Hammers can testify to this, but we take numerous calls. The only calls for service that we count is something where we have to assign an officer, so I'll give four, five to 10 calls a day, people wanting to talk to the chief, those aren't calls for service. It's legal, legal stuff we either have to respond to or talk to them on the phone that generates, so those are not phone calls alone, those are calls that we have to assign an officer to do. to do some type of law enforcement service for.
Okay, thank you.
So a call, a call from a citizen whose internet is down doesn't count as a service call?
No, that wouldn't generate a service call.
And that's one of those things that now that there are more detailed police reports shared in the press, it's both entertaining, but also lets people understand sometimes what our fearful police department is dealing with, so hats off to you guys.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Great. Thank you, chief, we appreciate the report, and we appreciate everything all of our officers do in the name of public safety in Fairfield.
Thank you.
Next, council, we do have an item to discuss in closed session, so I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session and ask to clear the room.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.